Well, and I think I'm switching. Look, you're right, I do want to, I do want to. I've been talking about this for a long time. The press doesn't know. Anyway, we'll see what happens. All the kind of new delegates, it's like I keep telling people, we keep learning stuff. I'm supposed to put it on the ballot.
Thank you. This is not the case. I don't know as well. Before that, do you want to, do you want to? Just plug in the mail. Jake, come on, buddy.
I don't think they have that.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and with his law of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of our guests for being here this evening, because it's a pleasure to have our guests with us at our meetings. With that, the vote for call will roll.
Belbra.
Here.
Rockmeyer.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ariso.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Tiger.
Here.
Oswald.
Here.
Tin.
Here.
May I, all eight present in the form? Next, I would like to obtain the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. If you've had an opportunity to take a look at them, I would entertain a motion to approve these. Motion has been made by Alderman Arnold, second by Alderman Dariso, that we approved the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no, and we have it. Next, we will go to the budget roster's report, trade report, place report, and we'll have the approval of bills, approval of late bills, late and hot bills, and late watershed. I'll start with you, Phil.
Expenses out of the general fund, one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Infrastructure fund, nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Uh, motor fuel tax, five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and nine cents. Street fund, thirty dollars. Water fund, uh, nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Gentlemen, go ahead and do it.
Big bill is four thousand and six hundred dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the budget roster's report, trade report, place report, approval of bills, approval of late bills, late and hot bills, and watershed. I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I motion we approve the reports as presented.
A motion has been made by Alderman Dariso, second by Alderman Campbell. Vote for call will roll. There's no discussion.
Tin?
Yes.
Oswald?
Hi.
Tiger?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Dariso?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Rockmeyer?
Aye.
Okay, motion of carry, eight to zero. Uh, next would be the Memorial Christian Church and Correspondence. And, uh... Everybody got an opportunity to take a look at it? Um, Memorial Christian Church, they're wanting to do a one-mile, five-k on May the twelfth to raise money to send the kids to Camp Mac. There's a map that's been enclosed that they would like to use. Any questions after looking at the map and looking at correspondence, the email? Is there any objection to, uh, to this?
Question, Mayor. Um, has Chief, if you've been, you're good.
Okay, all right.
I would motion we approve the request.
Okay, motion has been made that we approved the request from Memorial Christian Church for May twelfth for a five-k, one-mile run. Uh, let's, all those, any second of that? Okay, second by, um, Alderman Oswald. Any, any questions on this? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and, um, all those in favor say aye, and those opposed, they don't know, and we honestly have it. Next, we have Nancy Emery's correspondent. And Nancy Emery, as you can see, uh, has resigned from the Carlinville Police Department as of March seventh, twenty eighteen. That was his last day. Um, we'll go ahead. If there's not any objection or that, how this correspondence is placed on file, and, um, if there's no objection, we'll both have that. A motion? Okay. Motion by, um, Alderman Dariso, second by Alderman Oswald, that we place the correspondence on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Okay, and next will be city attorney update, and on the eighteen correspondence.
Right. Good evening, uh, council, elected officials, and audience. Um, the Attorney General, two weeks ago, I read a letter from the Attorney General that, uh, agreed with my position that I had argued before the Attorney General that this council, which unanimously voted to suspend the rules on January fourth, I believe it was, and then voted to adopt the, uh, ordinance updating our sexual harassment policy, was correct in doing so. The council had decided to suspend the rules. They did it properly, in my opinion, and as I mentioned, I believe, two weeks ago, I had argued that suspension of the rules is not only part of our ordinance, as it is most local governments. It is also, our council has adopted the most current version of Roberts' Rules, is the way the ordinance reads. Since then, uh, we've received the correspondence from Steve Silverman, who's Bureau Chief of the Public Access Bureau, and apparently he's a superior to the attorney who wrote to us, disagreeing with us, and saying that it is indeed a violation of the Open Meetings Act to pass this and this order. Uh, he doesn't go into much of an argument about it, but, uh, he's issued a non-binding, uh, opinion, disagreeing with his own council, and so, uh, and it also says this could be corrected by, um, you know, doing a motion to reconsider. Well, I'm still in disagreement with the Attorney General. I think this council got it exactly right. Uh, this is a tool commonly used by boards, city councils, local governments, all across the state of Illinois, and I'd say across the nation. Uh, I think you got it exactly right, uh, and if the council wished to reconsider this, I would suggest to me not do that, because that would violate the council's rules on motions for reconsideration, and it would be out of order, because this, uh, this motion, or excuse me, this, uh, ordinance wasn't adopted properly. Uh, I think the Attorney General is mistaken, and I would suggest to the council that you simply place this on file, uh, because, uh, the effect of it, uh, would mean that we could never suspend the rule. The fact that he talks a lot about first reading, uh, of course, it says first reading. The entire purpose of suspending the rules, for those of you who serve on boards, church boards or other boards, is to take something out of order, and that's what this council unanimously voted to do. Uh, and I think the, uh, even within his own staff, apparently, there's not a firm opinion, and so I recommend that you place the ordinance on file. The other reason I wouldn't ask that, well, I, I think we could not reconsider it, which you could do is start completely over, which would mean we're past the January fifteenth date that the General Assembly required us to pass this by to be in compliance with state law. So, uh, I would recommend that the council simply place this on file, and, uh, at some point, I assume, the Attorney General's office will, uh, may, uh, adopt another opinion, but certainly this doesn't comport with the way, I don't think any city councils or other bodies do business in regard to suspending the rules. So I would recommend that you accept it, and, and also, I don't want to, I want to make it clear, I, I'm not denigrating Mr. Silverman or his staff. I think they've got a hard job to do. They get these questions from all over the state, they get many, uh, from a lot of other cities, that, uh, you know, they see these for a lot of reasons, and so they've got a busy job to do. I think they're incorrect on this occasion, and, uh, because it's a non-binding resolution, if it was a binding resolution, uh, then I think, uh, as your attorney, I'd take some action, but it's a non-binding re- resolution, or non-binding opinion, I should say, not resolution, so I'd recommend you place it on file. Yes, Alderman, too. Alderwoman, too.
I, I don't have a copy of that in my pocket.
And I apologize, I had thought that, I should have taken care of that, but I thought you were going to get one, but certainly I'll hand them out. We can Xerox them now.
Is it worth reading? Since you read the first one, did you read this one?
I read parts of the first one. If you want me to read this one, I'll...
Just...
Read it. This is, uh, Dear Mr. Kraft and Mr. Musio, and I assume somebody gave it to the Inquirer, because, I don't know, the Inquirer didn't call me, so, but it wound up in the paper, so I assume somebody provided it to them, so I thought it was pretty well-known. Uh, dear, um, oh, excuse me, Dear Mr. Kraft and Mr. Musio, on March first, twenty eighteen, and this was issued March seventh, which was the day after our last meeting, I believe. On March first, twenty eighteen, the Public Access Bureau issued a non-binding determination concluding that the City of Carlinville, City Council, Council did not violate two-point-zero-two C of the OMA, five LCS, ILCS, one-twenty, two-point-two-zero C, by voting to pass a proposed ordinance prohibiting sexual harassment, which was identified as, quote, "first read", end quote, on its January second, twenty eighteen, meeting agenda. Illinois Attorney General PAC, they list the number issued March first of twenty eighteen, and that was the previous woman's opinion. That determination was inadvertently sent out prematurely and before supervisory review process was complete. Accordingly, this office is withdrawing that premature determination and issuing the attached final determination letter in this matter. We apologize for any confusion caused by this error. If you have any questions, contact me. Steve Silverman, he's a, I don't know his official title, I said Bureau Chief, I think he's a Attorney General supervisor, and he also routinely issues opinions for the Attorney General. Okay, and I can read the rest of it. Um, this, Dear Mr. Kraft and Mr. Musio, you owe me to skip the citations and stuff, otherwise I'll be here for the evening for a while. This determination letter is issued pursuant to section three-point-five E, which is a separate section of the OMA. For the reasons that follow, the Public Access Bureau concludes the City of Carlinville City Council unanimously voted to pass a proposed ordinance at its January second, twenty eighteen, meeting, when the council's agenda indicated that the ordinance would only be subject to a procedural motion. On January second, twenty eighteen, Mr. John Kraft, on behalf of Illinois Leaks, submitted a request for review alleging the council violated OMA at its January second, twenty eighteen, regular monthly meeting. Specifically, Mr. Kraft alleged the council failed to provide proper notice on the agenda of the final actions stayed taken when, at number one, voted to suspend its rules, and number two, voted to approve a sexual harassment policy ordinance that the agenda listed as being subject to, quote, "first read", end quote. On January fourth, twenty eighteen, the Public Access Bureau sent a copy of the request for, and its sites or ordinance that I sent them, and the minutes of that meeting that I sent them. Review to the council and ask if, where I had a copy of the meeting, the minutes together written response to Mr. Kraft's allegation. On January sixteenth, twenty eighteen, this office received those materials. The council asserted that it properly suspended its rules and properly passed the ordinance. On January seventeenth, twenty eighteen, the Public Access Bureau forwarded a copy of the council's response to Mr. Kraft. Later on that same date, Mr. Kraft replied that the council should have labeled the ordinance's agenda differently if it intended to vote on the matter, and that public bodies cannot spend, suspend the rules. When doing so, it frustrates the requirements of OMA. He also clarified he's not disputing the council's ability to suspend the rule, only that their ability to do so resulting in an OMA violation if the item not being properly placed on the agenda. Determination, the OMA is intended to ensure that, that the actions of public bodies be taken openly, and that their deliberations be conducted openly, citations, citations, section of OMA provides that on agenda. For each regular meeting shall be posted that the principal office of the public body and at the location where the meeting is to be held, at least forty-eight hours in advance of holding the meeting. The OMA further provides that any agenda required under this section shall set forth the general subject matter of any resolution or ordinance that will be the subject of final action, citations. Senate debate on the House Bill number forty-six-eight-seven, which is Public Act, again skipping citations, effective twenty thirteen, added to section two, oh, two-point-zero-two-C of OMA indicates the General Assembly intended this provision to ensure agendas provide sufficient descriptive advance notice of matters on which a public body anticipates taking final action. There was, and that's quoting from that bill, there was not, there was just no real requirement of how specific ellipses public bodies needed to be, to the public, needed to be to the public, I think there's some words missing there, and what they're going to discuss would be a final action, and this just says that you have to have, again, stars, general notice, and if you're going to have them take final action as the generally wants to be discussed, the people follow their units, the local government, know what they're going to be acting upon, and those are remarks of Senator Dillard in twenty twelve on the debate. Uh, and of course, as, as I think you all know, remarks of the senator during debate are that, and they're used to bolster a position that they aren't the law. The agenda for the council's January second, twenty eighteen, regular meeting listed the relevant agenda item under new business as the ordinance adopting policy prohibiting sexual harassment first read. The council's response to this office, the council indicated that although it has a rule providing for a vote on the proposed ordinance to take place of the meeting subsequent to the meeting at which the ordinance is first read, it also has a rule allowing to suspend its rules by vote of two-thirds. Thus, the council explained that unanimously voted to waive the requirement of waiting till the next meeting to vote on the ordinance after the first reading, and then unanimously voted to pass the ordinance. The minutes reflect this effect. In his reply, Mr. Kraft argued the council chose to place first reading on the agenda, which means it was not up for vote on the final action. He claimed it would have been proper for the council to vote on the ordinance if the agenda item had simply stated, quote, "ordinance prohibiting sexual harassment" without the qualifying language about first read. Although the phrase "ordinance adopting public policy prohibiting sexual harassment first read" did describe the general subject matter of the ordinance, a policy against sexual harassment, the language "first read" indicated that the council would only take a preliminary procedural step on the ba, on the matter. Further, the agenda did not indicate the council would consider suspending its rules in order to take a final action on the ordinance. In the absence of the language "first read", the public could have inferred the council would vote on the ordinance, even if the agenda didn't expressly indicate that a final action would be taken, saying citations regarding, uh, an opinion they issued in an environmental case. Sufficiently described the general subject matter of the final action, because the agenda was not required to specify what particular action would be taken. The inclusion of first read language, however, turned out to be misleading when the council suspended its rules and adopted the ordinance, construing section two-point-zero-two-C of OMA as permitting public bodies to vote on matters that are identified in meeting agendas as merely procedural motions that receive final action would be contrary to the General Assembly's intent of ensuring that the agendas notify the public of all the matters that public bodies will be acting upon. Because the council's January second, twenty eighteen, meeting agenda may not be reasonably construed as providing the public with advance notice that the council would vote on the ordinance at the meeting, this office concludes that the council violated section two-point-zero-two-C of OMA. To remedy that violation, we request the council reconsider, re-vote on the ordinance after providing the public with, with the required advance notice of that final action. The Public Access Council has determined that the resolution of this matter does not require the issuance of a binding opinion. This letter serves to close this file. If you have any questions, contact me. This number, Chicago address. Steve Silverman.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was up long. However, so, I want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. You feel certain that our agenda was okay and correct and...
And that you voted properly.
Okay.
Yes. I think that's inherent in suspending the rules.
All right, motion is placed on file.
Motion has been made by Alderman Campbell.
If there's a question, I'll take it.
I have a question. And the very last thing you said there, in your opinion, you said it, you said it case closed?
Yes.
Okay, it's a non-binding, and you...
It's non-binding. If it was a binding opinion, then we would have to go through what they call an administrative review process, but it's a non-binding opinion.
His opinion, it's closed.
It's closed.
Motion has, are there any other questions? A motion has been made by Alderman Campbell, second by Alderman Arnold, that we place the correspondence on file, all those in favor say aye, and those opposed say no, and we will place the correspondence on file. Next, we have public comment. Um, who wants to go first? Matt, do you want to go first?
No.
You don't want to go first? Okay. Uh, John Kraft, are you going to go first?
Kirk Allen can go if it's live and I'll go.
Okay.
Look, just by way of commentary, uh, Mr. Kraft, uh, and Illinois Leaks, I believe, which you are a part of, have sued the city, have pending lawsuits against the city. As an attorney for the city, I cannot speak to either of you without your counsel present. It is my advice to the council that you cannot speak to them except through your counsel while you have litigation pending where you've sued the city of Carlinville.
Are you saying I don't have a right to public comment?
That's correct.
So are you denying my right for public comment?
I'm advising you that you should comment through Mr. Joshua Burdick.
Chairman, are you going to deny my right or provide me my right to speak?
I, I'm asking on behalf of, um, our city attorney.
So what is the answer to the question?
He said that you should have counsel.
I'm not going to have counsel to speak for public comment, because what he has outlined specifically addresses matters related to that litigation. My public comment has to do with the agenda tonight and what's on this resolution tonight.
The council cannot communicate with you.
Excuse me, Chairman, not you, sir.
I should, I ask the mayor, on the advice of council, that it is improper to communicate parties that are in litigation with the city of Carlinville.
Fine, I'm not asking you to respond. I have a right to speak at public meetings.
No.
Yes, I do.
If you're represented by council?
No, sir. I'm not suing you.
Yeah, well, you're part of Illinois Leaks, is that correct?
You tell me. Do you see my name on there? Illinois Leaks is not even a corporation.
I'm advising the council not to communicate with parties who are in lawsuits against the city.
You don't have to communicate. I have a right to speak. If you're going to deny my right to speak, have me removed from this meeting.
Three minutes.
I thought your policy was five.
I gave you three.
So now you're going to restrict my time from five to three? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand correctly.
I, I'm advising the council, I'm advising the mayor, that parties that are in a lawsuit against the city should communicate to the council only through their attorneys, and the council should communicate with parties who are suing the city.
That's fine. I'm going to ignore your counsel. I don't have to take that. I'm using my public time. You gave me three minutes in violation of your own policy, which is five. The, the interesting thing that I find tonight, you have a resolution on home rule, and you want to change the Constitution, support changing the Constitution through referendum. If you want home ruling, you can do that by referendum already, you can do that here local. Um, that's the first issue. The other one, for an Attorney General to issue an opinion that really didn't go into detail, you sure read a lot of detail. That was pretty telling. The issue was whether or not it was properly on an agenda. With that in mind, you've taken action tonight again on issues that are strictly correspondence. That doesn't tell the public that you're going to take action. Now you can remotely close, and there's case law that supports that. So I, I find it just amazing that that is, is the advice that you're getting, but it's not a surprise. Um, from the U.S. Constitution, just so everybody is aware of it, a home rule unit may exercise any power and perform any functions pertaining to its government and affairs, including the not limited to the power to regulate protection of public health. Other municipalities outlines twenty-five thousand people as automatic home rule. Other municipalities may elect by referendum to become home rule units. Why in the world would you want to go after a statewide constitutional issue instead of doing it locally through a referendum? Let your voters speak. I would hope that that would be the path that you take. It's a whole lot simpler. Um, they already tried to pass home rule for five thousand people, and it never even made it out of committee, and I find it hard to believe that this one's going to ever make it out of committee, but even if it does, very tough if the legislators forward, and legislative floor debates, you're, you're right, the attorney's right, that's not law, but they do defer to that for... And part legislative intent debated into the law was my right to speak. How much time do I have left, Chairman?
A minute and ten seconds.
Minute and ten, is that on the three or on the five?
That's on the three.
Okay. Have you not read your packet? I'll save it for next time. I can usually get what I need to say in three minutes. Um, I do want the record to reflect, and I know we'll have recorded, somebody's recorded it. When your rule says five minutes, you can't cut people off and say it's three minutes.
Well, we had several speakers at the meeting.
But if your policy says five, so you're just going to disregard your own policy?
So, we had three minutes.
Okay. In regards to Roberts' Rules, Roberts' Rules don't trump law, and this issue that you first cited them was not an issue of whether or not you have the power to do what you did. It was about an agenda item, providing proper notice to the public.
Three minutes.
That's what that issue was about, nothing more. You're going to let me go or not?
Yes, go ahead, Phil.
It wasn't about what you said it was about, and I find it insulting that you tell your own clients that the ruling really didn't go in, in anything in depth. It was extensively in-depth, and it was spot-on with case law. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Let's switch to me, please.
John Kraft.
I am again going to say this is out of order, Mayor.
You're not the chairman. I drove here tonight to voice my concern that the city has overstated its authority in public comment policy. Yes, it is true that a public body may adopt the rules concerning public comment, however...
Mr. Kraft, I think our attorney indicated that we're not recognizing you to this evening.
So somebody else can talk when I can't.
Somebody that doesn't have lawsuits pending against this council.
I'm not talking about the lawsuit.
I don't know what you're going to talk about.
If I say one of these, Alderman and Burdick, I can say hi, how you do.
We're not here to answer questions. We're not here to answer questions. You're in litigation against the city.
I don't want to be talked, or you're going to remove me from this room, because if you do, you're committing class D misdemeanor. The Open Meetings Act gives me a right to speak during public meetings.
All right, you have three minutes, just like you said.
I drove here tonight to voice my concern that the city has overstated its authority in public comment policy. Yes, it is true that a public body may adopt rules concerning public comment, however, those rules must enhance the public's ability to comment, not restrict their ability. Public comment is a right granted by the legislature, and that right cannot be infringed upon by an individual public body. That right from the Open Meetings Act, section two-A, specifically states, "Any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address..."
Mayor DiMuzio, have you been getting briefs on the water company and what they are currently doing? I find it quite telling that on August 24, 2017, Attorney John Myers, who briefed this water company about the path they should take, gave an explicit warning that should they decide to go the route of a private water company, there could be litigation challenging the public body's authority to go that route. He said he would advise to stay away, to stay within the safe harbor of existing law, and don't go faking stuff up like you guys are doing.
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
If you chose to go that route, you are warned against. Now the attorney's prophetic warning is coming to the forefront. I certainly hope you're not counting on Fosterburg to rejoin, because that's not going to happen. Fosterburg Water District. As far as the paperwork for the city, Carlinville owns one-third, is that three minutes or five minutes?
That's three.
Carlinville owns one-third of the company with Alderman Campbell as the point representative to act on behalf of the board. If the board doesn't know what's going on with the private company, how can she act on behalf of the board? Are you really allowing her to keep you in the dark and make decisions without informing you what decisions are being made and without anything in written form? And while you're at it, this board and people from the private water company are saying, "We don't know anyone who has opposed the clean drinking order," because everybody knows that's not what the opposition is. The opposition is how it's being formed and how it's being preceded. Everybody likes clean drinking water, be included. So I have to say, thank you.
Okay. Nan, are you coming up to follow questions or comments? I think we're going to get three minutes, so, okay. We have others, I think.
You got other things going on? Okay, well, I thought...
No, we have other people.
Okay, well, I thought that this would come up during the attorney's comment, it didn't. I talked to Alderman DiRiso about this a week or so ago. I was accused, I was lectured for breaking the rules last time. I've taken the liberty of rewriting this ordinance, so if you can pass that around. That is compliant with the OMA, so that's free charge. So if you're working on it, you can look at that and give you some hints. So there was two meetings, two meetings ago, there was a question about Illinois Luvio, and this is a side note, I still don't have an answer to that question. Basically, the question was abated and nominated and ignored phone calls and emails to the attorney for Illinois Luvio. So back to the item at hand, I didn't break this rule. I did not call out anyone individually. You can look at the video. So I was lectured for something I didn't do, and then the city attorney said he would have stopped the question. Problem is, that would have violated OMA. That's, as Mr. Kraft described, that ordinance is outdated, and I thought it would have come up, since it was outdated, it was lectured about, and I thought it would come up in this meeting. Disappointed to not. And, you know, I don't see what point it is calling out a member of the public for something they didn't do in violation of an outdated ordinance. That's all I have.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that I didn't... Thank you very much for your comments, and with that, we'll move on to the next item, agenda item under our business, and that will be our budget.
I'm going to talk to that. All the committees have passed the budgets to be put into the system, and what happens now is it's put into the system and it's made available to the public. Then we're hoping to have a public hearing before the second meeting in April, and then we'll pass it in April. And that's what's happening with the budget.
Any other questions on this?
If any one individual committee wants to amend their budget at all, is there still time to do that? I mean, once it goes open for public comment, then there is time to amend it. Dan, is that right?
I don't know. I don't know where you're going with that process.
I think it could be amended after the passage.
I understand.
I had an issue on the lake that somebody called me and asked about, and I haven't had a chance to talk to any of the lake chairs, so...
It's not cut and sewn now, it's up for sale.
Everybody okay? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to the additional police pension payment.
Okay, that's me, too. This year, we always levy for the police pension, but we always have to pay an extra amount. This year, the actuaries, I can't say that word, advised that we pay $101,000 additional cost, and our budget can take that, so I finance recommended that we write to council that we pay $101,000 for the police pension. That's due April 1st.
Any questions?
I make the motion that we pay $101,000. It comes out of this year's... Yes.
Okay, so you're going to second, I'll take...
Please take one. How far behind are we on this? Please pick between the wire or you can...
Part of the difference is, there's a whole letter, I'll let you read it. The additional amount comes up because they just refigured some things, and they hadn't refigured things for 14 years. There's a whole email that Claudia gave me, and it helps you understand why it's jumped such so much. And it's not that we did anything wrong, it's just that it hadn't been refigured, and then it's refigured, and that's what our picture is. We've also budgeted $80,000 for next year, so hopefully it will be within the ballpark, but...
How far behind in police pension in general?
Yes.
Yeah, indeed. Right now, we're behind $3,680,253, $3,680,000. The pension is funded at 52% as we speak. The goal, and it's put up on a 23-year payback through the actuaries, the goal is to be at 90%. Some people can tell you that's probably not a very realistic goal, and from the information the auditor provided us last year that you all received, it's very common for municipalities pensions like this to be in the mid-30s percent funded. So while 52,000 is not something to write home about and brag about, it is considerably above where lots of people are.
And my point is, this is going to be ongoing for several years, this additional payment. You've got to try to hold it deep out.
Like I say, it's right now, it's 23-year payback.
A motion is made by Alderman Conville, second by Alderman Hyger, that we go ahead and do the additional police pension payment of $101,000.
Yes.
Any questions on this? You're in on the first and call the roll.
Hyger?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
DiRiso?
Hi.
Downey?
Yeah.
Oswald?
Tim?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried, eight to zero. Next would be the audit for 2018, Sarah.
Okay. In your package, you have from Fleming and Toffel and Company, their explanation on what the audit would be for 2018, 2019. There was some discussion on finding or putting it out, seeing if other companies would do it and what their costs were, but it was determined that it was too short of a period to do that, because companies have a hook out for the year ahead. So I'm making the motion that we accept Fleming and Toffel and Company's audit bid or whatever it is for $22,000. It won't exceed $22,000, plus if we have a single audit which has to do with grant writing, that would be from $3,500 to $5,000. I'll put that in a motion.
A motion is been made by Alderman Conville, second by Alderman Hyger, that we approve the $22,000 for the Fleming-Toffel and Company audit, the city audit. Any questions on this? You're in on the first and call the roll.
Tim?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
DiRiso?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Oswald?
Tim?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried, eight to zero. Next would be the audit for 2018, Sarah.
Okay. In your package, you have from Fleming and Toffel and Company, their explanation on what the audit would be for 2018, 2019. There was some discussion on finding or putting it out, seeing if other companies would do it and what their costs were, but it was determined that it was too short of a period to do that, because companies have a hook out for the year ahead. So I'm making the motion that we accept Fleming and Toffel and Company's audit bid or whatever it is for $22,000. It won't exceed $22,000, plus if we have a single audit which has to do with grant writing, that would be from $3,500 to $5,000. I'll put that in a motion.
A motion is been made by Alderman Conville, second by Alderman Hyger, that we approve the $22,000 for the Fleming-Toffel and Company audit, the city audit. Any questions on this? You're in on the first and call the roll.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald?
Hi.
Hyger?
Yes.
Billbrook?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
DiRiso?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Blackman?
Hi.
Okay, motion is carried, eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda is the tenant for the Illinois Luvio original water company, and doubt me of saying the cost per tenant is $22,000. Any questions on the Luvio water payment?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
This is still part of the original process, and everything will be agreed to.
Two questions, or two comments, maybe. At the Bunker Hill meeting, the open meeting, on still joining the Luvio company, I don't remember if it was the mayor of Bunker Hill or if it was Al Davenport, president of IA WRC, or made the comment that our mayor said that they would take care of the lawsuit against the Luvio Water Company.
There will be one?
Somebody, it was either the mayor or it was Al, said that Carlinville will take care of covering the lawsuit. So I just wondered if that's why we're drawing the whole amount right now, is to cover the lawsuit? And the other thing I have on that is because we're in a lawsuit and because the first question of the lawsuit is whether or not we have taken this $30,000 legally, whatever the hell you say that, we might have to pay that back. So do we want to go ahead and spend all this money, or would we be wise to hang on to some of it in case we do have to pay it? I mean, until we have a determination on that.
Explain the...
My question is, this is a partnership of all the entities. The first time out, we all paid $3,000. Second time around, we paid $5,000, the other two entities paid $3,000. Now we're putting in $22,000, the other entities all putting in $22,000 for the lawsuit?
I'm not sure.
I mean, even partnership, everybody should be pulling up to the same table at the same time.
Partnership or not, the original agreement I just voted on is true by majority of $30,000. Technically, this payment, I was against it, you putting it on the agenda. The first one got put on the agenda. I'm not really sure why, because we'd already agreed to, again, majority voted in favor of paying the Luvio Water Commission $30,000. That was our maximum, and we wanted to pay to try and get this out in going. We agreed to that. That was the majority vote. This is part of that $30,000. How the first payment got on the agenda, I really can't tell you why. I agreed to put the second one on because they played the first one out. This one, I thought, well, we've done the first two, we'll do this one. There's really no reason for this payment, as far as I'm concerned, to be on the agenda because we agreed by, again, a majority vote of the city council that we would pay $30,000 to this, and this is part of that $30,000. And then this is, from here on, it will be, you know, the $30,000 after this will be holding on and, you know, whether or not it continues or whatever. This is, to me, a done deal. It's agreed to have already been paid. We've already agreed. You've already voted on it. You voted on it. Whether you voted a or nay, it was a majority vote, and we agreed to pay this $30,000.
The dynamics of this whole situation has changed since the original vote. We have different players in this company. We were supposed to be a part of making decisions and ruling, and we can't even find out what's going on with this company. And now there's a lawsuit that appears to have boundaries and true facts that this company is illegal. I cannot see us giving $22,000 for an illegal project.
Right. Randy, I think you have...
Well, to follow up, yeah. Originally, perfectly wrong, but I thought we put $10,000 in of our own money and got a $30,000 grant for the study, the water study. And we got the $30,000 from the government back. Now we're putting another $30,000 in, and really it's a $70,000 project in part because we're reusing the money, right?
It's that $30.
So we put, who paid the front? Did we pay Tim for the water, the engineer's study? Did any of that $30 get spent in or not? Were we with MECO Construction or MECO Engineering?
No, we paid them.
We paid him $10,000, and that's it? None of the $30 got spent?
And then the $30 came back to us.
But we didn't spend the $30. So the $30...
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, we spent 40 originally with MECO, and then we got $30 back. Now we're spending 30 again.
No, this is the 30 that we got back.
So we didn't spend 40 upfront, we spent just 10.
It's that $30 back.
We spent 10 upfront. No, no, we didn't spend 40, just 10. Okay. There's one big curve, we didn't, we're not getting money back, and we're reusing it for one year.
The $30 that was agreed upon and voted in a majority that we would spend, this is that $30.
Okay, Sarah, I think Sarah...
I was just going to make the motion, I didn't do that, but go ahead. I believe what we voted on was up to $30,000.
Yes.
I think that's up to, depending upon need, and if they had other entities joining in, then I think the thinking was we weren't going to need to spend our whole $30,000. That was the discussion. But what is the need for $22,000 at this draw, Cindy? Do you know?
Well, yes, I do. So my opinion on this matter is that the city council voted to spend this $30,000 that they received in a grant for this project to move the project forward. Now, those costs, they, there are legal fees and there are engineering fees, and so we're moving our project forward. Moving a project forward costs money. The city of Carlinville is determined to spend $30,000, and the company is simply invoicing them for the money that they already voted to spend. So I don't actually think we need another vote on this issue, but of course, that would be something for Yan or Orion to answer, not myself. But I think the votes already happened, and we're asking them to issue the remainder of that money. So I don't really know how much more discussion that you have to have about that.
Well, I have a little bit more discussion in that, at the meeting in Bunker Hill, Al said, "If this company has to dissolve, nobody's going to get any of their money back." So we will have given $30,000 for nothing. So can we dole it out a little bit slower, just in case this lawsuit proceeds and the judgment is found against us, and we have to pay that money?
I was not at the Bunker Hill meeting.
But surely you guys discussed that.
So I can't speak for Alan, and I can't speak for whoever you think may or may not I haven't spoken to any of them about that, so I can't make any comments about that. But I, I don't know. I know that when we originally decided to spend this money, that we knew that we were incurring some amount of risk. We would incur that risk no matter what way we went. If we spent money on engineering for some other project and didn't finish that project, that would have been incurring a risk. I believe that the city of Carlinville calculated those risks before they voted the original vote to spend this money. And that they decided that the outcome, they believed in it heavily enough to take a risk. And I think we should honor that until a judge rules on that issue, which has not happened. So that's, that's what I believe about it.
I can still just write and make the motion.
There was something else we did when we decided to go ahead this morning. We put you in charge to bring information back to us so that we could move forward, knowing about the company and the business we were getting involved with. And you're not standing up to your part of the bargain.
Okay, Mr. Motion.
I'll make the motion that we allow the twenty-two thousand dollars to the Illinois Ollivio Regional Water Company.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, second by Alderman Teresa, that we go ahead and do the request for payment twenty-two thousand to the Illinois Ollivio Regional Water Company for the compensation and support of the water company. With the current equivalent of this car, the city council. Any other questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Chairman, point of order. Could you tell us what that payment is for?
Billbrook?
No.
Blackman?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Hager?
No.
Oswald?
Hi.
Tim?
No.
Okay, motion is carried five to three. We'll move on to the next, I'm on the agenda.
Actually, I did have an update to give additionally.
Oh, do you? Okay, you're going to go ahead and...
I would like to go ahead. I know at the last meeting, there was more discussion of the list of twenty-two entities that the Illinois Ollivio Company had contacted. The matter is currently under consideration by the Illinois Attorney General's Office and we're waiting for a decision on that. And we would respond accordingly at that time because that document belongs to the Illinois Ollivio Regional Water Company. So that's my update on the list of twenty-two entities that were contacted. The update on the company itself at this point is that an opposition group has filed a lawsuit via Mr. and Mrs. Brophy, which challenges the company's authority. We believe that it's a calculated effort to disrupt our membership drive and obstruct our progress and further some hidden agenda. Our attorney has thoroughly researched the issue and he's confident that we will ultimately prevail. In short, the plaintiff believes that Dillon's rule applies, but case law and legislative history for section ten A of article seven of the Illinois Constitution clearly indicate that it does not. Attorney Foreman believes that this is a good opportunity for us to put all of the misinformation to rest once and for all, so that our project may proceed and we can move the project forward to bring clean water to Carlinville. He looks forward to an opportunity to present the issue in court where reason and rule of law typically prevail and that YouTube videos and the uninformed are given the credence they deserve, which is none. The Ollivio Company is currently in the process of recruiting new members. Two of those communities, Carrollton and Bunker Hill, had public meetings to discuss their project and the interest in the project recently. I did not attend those meetings out of respect for those communities with the knowledge that some faction from Carlinville would probably present themselves and cause a majority of a forum to be present and interrupt a public meeting of another community with a meeting of the city of Carlinville. So I did not attend, which was a wise decision, as I understand that Alderman Toon and Alderman Hager attended one and Alderman Toon attended the other. So perhaps they would like to give an update on their activities also pertaining to the Illinois Ollivio Water Company, but as for now, that completes my update as a vote.
I'll be happy to give an update on both meetings. Carrollton discussed it, they had a lot of questions, there was a lot of misinformation. They were under the impression, I believe, that each entity was going to have their own water treatment plant. Where they got that, I have no idea. But they had a lot of questions, there were a lot of good people in the audience that asked questions. And their determination was that they would have their engineer do a cost analysis of working, doing the repairs on their current water treatment plant versus investing in the regional plant. So they kind of left it hanging while they're waiting for their engineer to do his study. That was a determination on their part. And Bunker Hill just basically had a lot of questions. They were very receptive and open and welcomed questions and answered questions. And Al was there and answered questions. And as you well know, the next two nights, they voted unanimously to move forward.
That's all I have.
Okay, next on the agenda is a notice to proceed for standard edition of the GMPR project.
Did this, one page, notice to proceed, make it in the packet. So at the committee meeting, this is for the standard edition, Water Main Replacement Project Phase Two. At the Public Works Committee meeting, we talked about the agreement. And this is just standard contract document stuff. So the agreement and performance and payment bond came back and Mr. O'Brien, I think those made their way to you. And I didn't have the notice to proceed at the committee meeting, so that was the only document that's left to be completed. When the agreement and everything looks to be in order, then that notice to proceed will be executed, assuming everything is in order. It can be executed tonight, agreed to tonight, you can fill out the dates with tonight's date on them. Tonight's date is the, well, actually regardless of what date you choose, assuming it's a date here in very near future that we choose to put as the executed notice to proceed date. The completion date for substantial completion is August thirtieth. So we'll have a pre-construction meeting coming up soon with air funding meeting. And they'll start whenever they start, we don't really have any control as to when they start. They could start in July, they could start sometime in April. We don't have a control as to when they start, but they have to be done substantially complete by August is what the big documents state. So that's what we'll go on that notice to proceed. The document you're looking at is blank because we didn't, we didn't fill it out, not knowing for sure. We had, they do all the coordination we needed to do to get the dates in there. But assuming everything, like I just said, assuming everything is, is good, then it would be filled out with today's date or tomorrow's date or date in the near future. And then substantial completion will be August thirtieth.
By the way, for what it's worth, I met with Tim on, I believe it was Friday morning, and there's no problems in my trust, as far as I'm concerned. So he was going to take it from there.
Okay, so then we decided, I think that, so, yeah, it would be just a motion and what I'd be looking forward to, to airing with the agreement, executing the notice to proceed and executing the notice to proceed. If there's any questions, I can try to answer those. I would look forward to the motion proceeding, we'll air it on the evening.
Motion has been made by Alderman Teresa, second by Alderman Hyder, that we go ahead and proceed for the standard edition of the GMPR project. The standard edition, any, any other questions, clerk will call the roll.
Teresa?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald? Billbrook?
Yes.
Blackman?
Okay, motion is carried eight to zero. Okay, Carlinville Associates Certificate number eight and... Who's doing this one?
Certificate, I guess I'm doing the certificate number eight, just by way of explanation. This is, you've approved seven others of these, I know you're familiar with them. Last week, I spoke with attorney Vic who represents Carlinville Associates. And to make a long story short, Mr. Schering and I had a telephone conference with him and Claudia provided the numbers. And those numbers are in your packet. And anyway, this is simply, and be fortunate they didn't print it all out because there's some eighty-six pages of various documented expenses of big things and small things that they have, Carlinville Associates has spent in the course of this Tiff district. So this is simply the eighth one. And they've submitted a reimbursable of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Of course, as you all well know, that's dependent on what money's in the Tiff district, which certainly is not what's there today. Certainly, I would urge your approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, second by Alderman Teresa, that we go ahead and approve the certificate reimbursement for the redevelopment project clause. This is certificate number eight in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-two cents. Any questions on this? The clerk will call the roll.
Tim?
Yes.
Oswald? Hager?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Teresa?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Blackman?
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, will be the spring cleanup dates and, what do you mind talking about those?
Yes, the Public Works Committee meeting last week, and I mean voted unanimously to accept the dates of April twentieth and twenty-first, or strictly based with the numbers. I would like, Tim, he doesn't tell, he's not here. I know there's, I think Saturday, does anyone remember how late we were going to be open on that Saturday?
I think till four, but they also say...
But they would stay...
They stay and people, if there's a lot of people, they stay till everybody's...
I think it was at eight o'clock?
I think it was eight to four.
Eight to four on Saturday, then it'll be normal business hours on Friday.
But they did say that they would stay or something.
Yeah, they're not going to turn in, they're not going to turn in. They're lined up at the gatepost. I would move that we accept those dates and advertise it so.
Motion has been made by Alderman Teresa, that we go ahead and approve the dates of April twentieth and twenty-first. Also advertise that, there are, second by Alderman Campbell. Any questions on this?
Billbrook?
Yes.
Blackman?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Oswald?
Hi.
Tim?
Yes.
Motion is carried eight to zero. Central McCupin World Water District?
That was discussed at our Public Works Committee meeting. There was a representative from Central McCupin that asked us to consider a decrease for that due to some regulatory requirements that they had coming up. There has been no information provided at this time as far as dates that I'm aware of, I haven't seen it in the package.
Ronnie, is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, well, no, and then I'm going to stand up. There, I, I shared some usage information with Tim probably on Friday, so he hasn't had much time to do anything with that. And then we hope to start, I probably said at the committee meeting that we hope to start this week and probably be the last week of March, flushing water would be my best guess. So, and, you know, it was just, it was a request, so that speaks of it.
I was at the meeting and the gentleman requested it and I thought it was simpler than it is. First of all, I haven't, I don't know anything about the past history with it. I don't know what the contract says. I don't know how, even how many gallons that they use. And I know I, I voted yes to pass it on, but if it would go for a vote right now, it would go no, because I don't feel like we have the information that we need. I'm not saying we don't necessarily want to help them out, but you've got to come up with some figures for us. You've got to come up with something, not you, Ronnie, but the word, Central McCupin World, need to give me your more information before I'm comfortable with it.
Ronnie, are you etching stone on those dates to flush? Because I know your EPA is requiring it.
Right, yeah, yeah, they are.
If you don't do it here, you're, you're not going to be interested.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna start, they're gonna start here. And like I said, yeah, it's a, it's a simpler process to start here. So, and I think the, the general process was, I think everybody understands the tight timeframe and it was just a starting point for them to, to come and make the request. And what happens, happens and there were no expectations, which you can't win if you don't.
All right, so we'll, we'll go ahead and move on from this subject then. Central McCupin will put on hold.
I have a question. Are they coming back to Public Works to...
I have, I do not know the answer to that. They basically came and asked for water, a special water rate because they have some new regulatory requirements coming down the pipe, some flushing and so forth. No information was provided to us as far as how many gallons we're talking. They did, I think there was a comment made correctly from our committee that they wanted us to match what they were getting from Jersey Bill. They would like it permanently, but at least with the flushing statement, I could be wrong on that, but I believe that's what they said.
Okay, where did they get the Jersey bill?
Not from Jersey Bill. I'm sorry to interrupt, but from Henderson or... I'm sorry, from the plug place. Just to clarify. Off the top of my head, no, I don't have any. I know it's floated around at the committee meeting, but we can't really have that.
Ronnie, would I add any more to that? No, the person will move on on Water Department deposits and service charges.
We're going to have something in the packet on this, I know we voted for it, did not make it in the packet. I don't know that it's, since urgency, it has to be done tonight, I hope I have done by the fiscal years, you know, beginning. So I'd like to get the information in the packet and bring it back to the next meeting or something.
So we'll hold that one off?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one is the resolution on Home Rule. And it is exactly what it says, the resolution that IML has drafted. It is in the General Assembly right now, it's being sponsored by Senator Hutchinson, it's a Senate joint resolution, there's nine. And what they're asking for, I believe, is that Senate joint resolution nine. And they're asking, I think there's nine hundred and some communities that are over the five thousand threshold. They could possibly, if they put this on the, on the ballot, would be able to become Home Rule if they so choose. It's a, would go on the ballot in November. You all have the decision cases from IML. There's all sorts of information and I would suggest that we take a look at it. And if you have any questions, let's, we can go proceeding if you so choose.
Can we take one until we have a chance to look at this?
Sure. You can do whatever you want.
And have a discussion on it. You made the comment that if it passes, a community could go, anybody over five thousand population, if they so choose, or is it automatic?
Well, if the voters don't choose, it's not for us, it's if the voters choose.
If your voters pass it, then, and you have a population over five thousand, you're automatically...
It's up to the voters.
They're automatically Home Rule if it passes.
It's up to the voters, the voters will decide whether you want to hold or not.
And there'll be voters that are from communities that have a population of twenty?
They'll take each, each community, I believe, and not one.
Each community has its...
Wrong, wrong, it's a statewide vote. It's a statewide vote, it would be automatic for a population of five thousand.
Oh, I misunderstood, what? My question was, if it passes statewide, then any community with a population over five thousand automatically becomes home rule?
Yes, yeah.
So I think we need to have a discussion first, like, about.
Take the, there's plenty of material for it. You're always welcome to, browse through it, see whether you wanna do it or not. It's passing the resolution, and then they did it up to I M L, and whether you wanna be part of, not be part of. Any other questions?
Motion is adjourned.
Motion is made by Alderman Hyder, second by Alderman Oswald, that we turn all the things to I M L.